Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting from Monday, May 12, 2025, 6:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ludwick?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Alsberg?
Here.
Reins? Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I did receive a message from Councilman Reins that he would not be able to be here this evening. I'm looking for a motion to excuse. Thank you. Do I support?
Support.
Thank you both. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be made.
Motion approved.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to come forward at this time? All right. Moving down our agenda, we have our council meeting minutes from April 28, 2025. I'm looking for approval unless there are items that need to be changed.
Motion approved.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Terry, you had an opportunity to review accounts payable for this evening.
Okay. It's kind of a small one this time, only 125,000. But again, the question is always, where did all that money go?
Yes.
I'm glad to say that there were zero payments to other government organizations. That's one of the reasons why the number's small. And about half of it went to one failure at the wastewater treatment plant where the boiler had been replaced. The guy at the wastewater treatment plant, whose name I've forgotten, sorry, gave me a tour a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And he said it's important to remember that everything that flows into the wastewater treatment plant is trying to destroy the plant.
Yes, it is.
So we spent a chunk on that. We also had six repairs for vehicles, but that wasn't that big a deal.
Okay.
Oh, and we spent 15,000 on computers, which we talked about last week.
Yes.
Okay? So that's my summary.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
To approve checks 78309 through 78326 and ACH 1517 to 1546 and EFT 1547 for a grand total of 125,753 dollars and 71 cents.
Thank you so much, Terry. And thank you again for always giving us that breakdown. I think it's very important for our council members and for our viewing audience. With that being said, I'm looking--
One more thing.
Yes.
There was one thing. I had a question for John. I've never seen this before. This is an educational thing for me. But I guess this is normal in municipal governments. We had a payment of $9,000 of interest on the loan. But it was interest only. We didn't pay anything on the principal. So I said, "John, why are we doing this?" He said, "Well, this is normal for municipals, municipalities. They'll borrow a bunch of money and they'll pay it back once a year. They'll pay back a chunk on the principal and then once a year they pay a chunk back on the interest." I saw this at NESA last time, too.
Okay.
So this is weird, but now we all know, right?
Yes. Clarification is good. All right. Thank you. So we do have a motion. I'm looking for support. Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwick?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to our action items, we do have three that are before us. The first is the resolution of support for Red Cedar River Water Trail. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, Johnny Hanafin.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a lot of words. But it's a great project. It's really, it's a great thing. It's really a virtually no-cost obligation for us as a city. But in partnering with our neighbors in Williams Town and Meridian Township, we're seeking to get the Red Cedar designated as a river water trail. And that's a state designation to the state of Michigan. It legitimizes it as a waterway for recreation, but it also opens up the door for additional funding through state sources. So it's very well-written. Wish I could clement, but you know, man, I've tried to write a little bit more levity than that. But I don't really have any other things to add unless you have questions. But this will be bundled with Meridian Township and Williams Town and sent on to the state.
All right. I think this is great. I mean, we already have our kayak landings, more exposure that it brings to our community. I think it's a win-win for us as well as the township partners. I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of state designation for the Red Cedar River Water Trail.
Thank you so much, Terry. Thank you, Scott. We have a motion. We have support. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwick?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
All right. Next on our action items, we're getting close to kicking off Red Cedar Jubilee. This is something that we do every year. It's the Red Cedar Jubilee permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in Dalstrom Park and Liquor Control Commission Resolution. I'll turn this over to our city manager, Johnny Hanafin, again.
Thank you. There's two motions tonight. The first one is to approve a permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalstrom. For the dates there, that's required by our own city rules and standards and ordinances for parks. Anytime there's a request for alcohol sales, the council has to approve that. And then the second is the application. It's a resolution for the Liquor Control Commission for the special license for Red Cedar Jubilee. Red Cedar Jubilee in and of itself is not an alcohol establishment, but it's a nonprofit. And the state allows nonprofits to apply for a certain number of special liquor licenses for events throughout the year. So those are the two. We see this every year. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Do want to point out, the Jubilee is starting on the 14th, but the beverage tent won't start until the end of the year.
Correct. Again, just like the city manager said, we do see this every year. Typically, Councilman Reins is here to give us that little bit of update. He is not here this evening, but there is a new kickoff date, that Saturday, June 14. But again, liquor sales won't start till Wednesday. So if nobody has any questions, we are looking for two motions. I'm looking for that first motion.
I would move that we approve permit for the sale and consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalstrom Memorial Park for the Red Cedar Jubilee, specifically the dates, June 18 to the 21st and August 25.
Thank you so much, and we have support. If there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please, for the first resolution? Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwick?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
All right. Now I'm looking for that second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Liquor Commission Resolution authorizing the application for a special license for the Red Cedar Jubilee from June 18 to 21, 2025.
Thank you so much. Do I support? Thank you. We have a motion. We have support. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwick?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And I'm sure that the Red Cedar Jubilee Committee will be very happy to get both of those motions back for them. Our last action item is road repairs, major and local. We do have a memo in our packet. It is up on the screen. I will turn this over to our city manager, Johnny Hanafin, here.
Yeah, thank you. As we came out of winter, there's some areas in town that really need some immediate patching. It's called removing the place, R and R. We did, through with Regment DVW, we got three bids for the work. They're not entire lengths of the street. They're more difficult spots. There's an area on Mechanic at South Street that's pretty bad. High Street right out here, as you had east. And then South Putnam has a patch. You've probably driven over it or near it. And then School Street has a pretty significant patch that's necessary as well. So spoke with three companies. These are companies that I've worked with in the past, either here or in other communities. Got a pretty solid spread of pricing. Heizer Asphalt's in Grand Rapids, so their price is a little bit higher. Levent Starks is in Lansing. And Right Way is from Hinkley. So we went central, east, and west to get bids. So happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have funds available in major and local to complete the work. And this work would take place before July 1st. So obviously, with the one-year Mechanic itself, if we can't get those done right before Jubilee, we do them shortly thereafter.
All right. Great. Great explanation. Good bids. I appreciate that.
Just to comment, this type of bidding process emphasizes what I think is so important, that we put our bids out for that variance of $20,000. So I appreciate John and the staff going out and securing those bids.
Great.
Yeah, that was a good-- the $20,000 is pretty substantial. Do you have any idea what was going through their heads? I mean, they must have been seeing it differently.
Yeah, and they quoted the unit price. It probably includes their mobilization, which is coming from Grand Rapids. One of the difficult things we're running into when the economy and there's a lot of construction going on, it's difficult to get bids for things. And sometimes contractors will, they'll bid, but they don't really sharpen their pencil because they already have so much work. So they'll give you a price, and if you accept it, then--
Because they don't really know who else has bid.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yes, Terry.
And final comment, just, I went to the NESA meeting. Of all the NESA meetings I've been at, this kind of practice I've been to one time. We spent almost a million dollars in the few meetings that I've gone to. And only one time was there a three-bid thing that happened. So good on you. This is the way governments should spend taxpayer money.
I believe so. I think the more transparency, the better.
Yeah.
So that you don't have those unanswered questions. Maybe you can take this best practice to NESA and show them what we do. With that being said, if there's no other comments, I'm looking for a motion for this that is before us.
I would make a motion to approve the Right Way asphalt bid of $5.02 per square foot of asphalt removal and replacement for a total of $29,367 with a 10% contingency of 29.36.
Great. Thank you so much. Do I support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ludwick?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. We do have a lengthy discussion items list. So we'll kick this right out with rental inspection, presentation. We do have information in our packet. Who am I turning this over to, John?
I can kick things off.
All right.
We had discussed this a couple times over the last couple of years, at least since I've been here. We dialed in a little bit more on this at our last visioning session for coming fiscal year. We did that in February. And so I'd asked Carlisle-Wortman to join us here tonight. For those of you who don't know, Carlisle-Wortman is a pretty large regional planning outfit. They do all kinds of work, anything from planning and zoning to building official services to running a full-service rental inspection program. I think I might have mentioned this at the last meeting, but I know, at least I mentioned it at the visioning session in February, that they currently do a program very similar to this in the city of Howell. So we do have a representative here from Carlisle.
Great.
Why don't you stand up and introduce yourself?
Come on forward.
All right.
We have a fabulous podium there for you.
Good to meet you.
And if it's in the way of the light, feel free to pull it back a little bit.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Mike Radzick. I'm the operations manager with Carlisle-Wortman. We're based in Ann Arbor, but as the city manager mentioned, we service about 80 communities throughout southeast and central Michigan. All of our clients are local municipalities. So there's never a concern regarding conflicts of interest with any private developers. That's one of the things that we believe very firmly in. As was mentioned, our company is primarily a planning firm, but we also have a construction code division. We do everything from fully-operate building and planning departments, such as City of Riverview, for instance. We staff their entire building, rental, inspection, and planning department, all the way down to just doing commercial plan reviews remotely and everything in between. We got into the rental inspection business about three or four years ago. Just by way of background, I have, I came to the company with some experience in this. My first career was in law enforcement. Thank you for your service. I was with Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department for 22 years, retired as a lieutenant. Then went to work for our largest contract customer for policing, Ypsilanti Township. And eventually became their community development director and was able to retire from there. And I came on board with Carlisle-Wortman. So back in 2007, '08, right about the time the economy was crashing, the township embarked on a rental inspection program. And they did it incrementally. Started in low, moderate income areas with seeding from a CDVG block grant. And over the course of a couple of years, it grew township-wide, 100% supported by user fees. And that's the model that Carlisle-Wortman introduces to municipalities that are interested in doing this. We're currently in the middle of startups in about three or four communities. And as was mentioned, we did start up the program in the city of Howell. And after two to three years of doing that, it was humming along very smoothly. And they chose to bring the inspection services in-house because they felt that they could do it a little more cost-effectively. And we were happy to hand it over to them, more or less the turnkey project. All they had to do was staff it. So I provided you with two different documents. This one has a lot of information about the benefits, pros and cons of rental housing inspection. But if we could just jump for a moment to the PowerPoint? There we go. Oh, it's sideways. There we go. I did a little bit of research. The first thing I was looking at when a community asks for a presentation on this topic is, what does your rental housing stock look like? So according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the 2023 American Community Survey Five-Year Estimate, there's 1,836 housing units of all types in Williamson. 93% of those, at the time of the survey, were occupied and 7% were vacant. Of the occupied units, 73% were occupied by owners. And 27% were occupied by renters. And that would include all forms of rental housing, whether it's multifamily apartment buildings, single-family homes, duplex houses, or other types of hybrids, like, I don't know if your zoning code permits boarding houses or things like that, but it would include that as well. And I will tell you, 27% rental housing is kind of right in the median of all the communities that we've worked with. The highest by far that I've worked with personally is Howell. Anybody want to guess what, how much of their housing stock is rented?
43%.
Really? 53%.
53? Wow, it was only $10,000.
Oh, God. More than half the housing in the city of Howell is rented.
Must be very inexpensive then.
Pardon me?
It must be very inexpensive then.
Au contraire. Many of those homes are older historic homes that started out as single-family and over time got, probably illegally without permits or zoning approvals, got chopped up into two, three, four, and sometimes six and seven small little apartment rooms. And so the city is still struggling with what to do with those. What they decided to do with us was, hey, go in there and inspect it. At the very least, let's make sure it's safe for the people that are living in it. And then we'll step back, slow the train down, and figure out with the owner, how can we get this back to something that the city can accept? And they're still in the process of incrementally doing that over time. Of all your owner-occupied homes, 63% had mortgages at the time the survey was done. That's a pretty low amount. And the median monthly mortgage cost was just under $1,700 a month. Flip side is the rental housing. Of all the rental occupied units, according to the survey, and by the way, this survey, when they report rental units, these are residents of your city that are self-reporting to the Census Bureau that they rent. Okay? So we consider that to be pretty accurate. We know that they may miss a few folks here and there, but by and large, it's pretty accurate numbers. The median monthly rent in the city, according to the Census, was $972 a month. That's the median, right in the middle. It's not the average. The median, compare that to Ingham County. Ingham County's 8.5% higher than Williamson. Michigan's 11.5% higher. And the median rent in the United States is considerably higher. Some of the pros of doing rental housing inspections. First and foremost, improving housing quality and protections for tenants. I suppose when I was a lot younger, maybe when I was a rookie patrol officer, I may have thought to myself, gosh, you know, if a tenant has a problem, something's not working in their unit, why don't they just call the landlord and say, hey, fix it? It's not always that easy, especially in this day and age. Many times, whether it's found it or perceived, many times tenants feel as though they shouldn't or can't complain because they run the risk of maybe being evicted or something else negative occurring. And that's where the city could step in and say, look, we require these inspections. We come in and do the inspections, we being the city. We observe it. We're the ones complaining, if you will, and requiring you to maintain the property to the minimum safety standards that the city has established. There are a lot of community benefits. You may or may not realize, when there's a lot of rental properties in a neighborhood and the rental inspection program comes through, over time, the aesthetic appearance and the functionality of those homes in those neighborhoods tend to go up quite considerably. And the owner-occupied neighbors take notice. And usually, there's a bit of a ripple effect, keeping up with the Joneses, if you will. And if you've ever lived next door to a place that had a lot of noise and disturbance or was blighted, it's aggravating. I mean, day in and day out, having to live with it. Many of these are rentals. And there is some statistical data that backs up the fact that crime and blight complaints tend to be focused in high rental neighborhoods. It's just a fact of life. I'm not passing judgment on anybody. It's just that the data bears that out. Fair competition for landlords. Landlords, I'm not one, but if I were one, the first thing I would say is, hey, man, you're, what do you need to do this for? You're costing me money. And if you do it, I'm going to have to pass that on in the form of a rent increase to my tenants. You're hurting my tenants. Now, there's, in my mind, after doing this for many years, there's what I would very simply say are good landlords and bad landlords. The good ones are the ones that maintain their properties without being hounded to do so. They charge a fair, competitive rent. The bad ones never put a dime back into their property. It's shabby. It's rundown. They're collecting the same or maybe even more rent, and they're not reinvesting to at least meet the minimum standards. What we have found over time in different cities and townships is that the quote-unquote "good landlords" are very appreciative because it levels the playing field for their competition or with their competition, where everything has to meet a minimum standard for safety and functionality. The rental inspection program provides revenue for the inspections and the enforcement. It should be designed, and when we do it, it always is designed, to be 100% user-supported, user-fee-supported, with no impact on the general fund. There should never be a contribution, just like running a building department. Per state law, it's supposed to be 100% funded by permit fee revenue. Self-supporting and budget-neutral, we've mentioned that. And the last thing I skipped over was clear standards. Forgive me because I don't know off the top of my head, but does the city have a property maintenance code adopted? Is it the IPMC International Code? Good. We always encourage communities to adopt the current version of the International Property Maintenance Code as their own local code. You have the opportunity, when you do that, to customize it and tweak it to suit your individual, unique needs. And that forms the basis for the rental property maintenance standards for rental properties. What we typically do, if a new community passes the ordinance, before we solicit registrations or begin inspecting, we usually try to schedule a town hall meeting, if you will. We personally invite every known landlord in the community to come and attend. Our inspectors are there, our building official, code officials are there to answer questions. We provide them copies of chapters three through seven of the International Property Maintenance Code, which is the meat and potatoes for what the inspectors will look for. We give them checklists of all of the common types of violations that inspectors tend to find. And we give them tips on how they can and should go through their property in advance and take care of anything that, where they see a red flag. Because we want them to succeed. We want them to pass the first time through with no necessity for any reinspection, you know, secondary visits. And on that note, real quick, most communities will write their ordinance in order to provide an incentive for the good landlords. The incentive is typically, and you can adjust this to your liking, but if during the first inspection, there are fewer than, most places say fewer than five, five or fewer code violations, and none of those are life safety that present an immediate danger or hazard, and they all get fixed by the first reinspection, which is typically 30 to 60 days later. They have an opportunity to earn a longer certificate of compliance, maybe three years instead of just the standard two years, which is a 50% discount on their compliance fees. And so it provides a financial incentive for the landlords that are doing it right and wish to continue doing so. Sorry, my computer is puttering out here. Some of the cons. Uneven enforcement. And this is totally a city management issue. When I say uneven enforcement, I mean, talking to landlords throughout the years, I don't care if it's the McKinleys of the world that own tens of thousands of units around the country or, you know, the mom-and-pop, single-family duplex down the street. That's potential rental or retirement income for them in the future. They all say the same thing. Money aside, what's important to them is whichever inspector shows up on a given day, if a different one comes back later or next time through, the goalpost should not be a moving target. Right? Inspections should be uniform. They should be fair and reasonable. If I come through today and I cite three things and somebody else, a different inspector, comes back 30 days later for the reinspection, they shouldn't be tacking on more things that didn't get caught the first time. And likewise, with the certification periods, year after year. Don't pass me today and then come back two years later and tell me that the handrail going down into the basement is not code-compliant and I have to replace it. So that's what I say, what I mean when I say uneven enforcement. And like I said, that's a management issue. That's something we take seriously. And if the city embarks on this, the city should take that seriously because it could make or break a program. The increased cost for landlords. There is no denying that there is a compliance cost for landlords. However, if you embark on this venture at some point in the future, we or anyone else that knows how to do it can be able to tell you, based on the inspection fees that you adopt, almost to the penny, what the compliance cost for the typical rental dwelling in the city will be. We've done this many, many times in a lot of different places. And it has never been more than one-half of 1% of monthly rent. So for instance, I don't know, take a 10-unit apartment building where the building gets inspected. The outside of the building, the interior common areas, stairwells, the mechanical rooms, the laundry rooms, they all get inspected and certified. That includes the outside premises. If there's carports, everything. Then the units get inspected. And what we do is, we take the cost to inspect the building and the units cumulatively. We build in at least one reinspection for every aspect of that, plus the registration fee upfront, which is typically a one-time fee, good for the life of ownership. So the first cycle cost is a little bit higher than the subsequent ones. And in every case we've studied so far, it never exceeds one-half of 1% of monthly rent. So if rents, what was it, 900 and some dollars a month? One-half of 1% of that amount is what the average compliance cost to the landlord would be. So if they have to raise rent to comply, it would be that amount, five bucks a month. Now, what's not included in that is the unpredictable variables. Landlord A has tons and tons of things to repair because there's tons of code violations. It's not safe. Why is that? It's usually because they have just deferred the maintenance for a very, very long time. This landlord has very little, if any, code violations. So the cost of those repairs are not taken into account because that is 100% the landlord's responsibility. are not taken into account, because that is 100% the landlord's responsibility. If they hadn't been deferring maintenance year after year after year, they wouldn't have a huge expense to sit here. Pass-through costs to tenants. Landlords typically will pass through those compliance costs. And again, if it amounts to a half of 1% of monthly rent increase, that's what it is. We have had some property owners, especially large apartment buildings, I know down river in South Ave where we inspect the multifamily, there's a big apartment complex, and they went through the whole introductory process. And then when it came time, by the way, the inspections always get scheduled at least 30 days in advance. Landlord has to give the tenant at least 72 hours' notice. And when we showed up to do it, they said, "Oh, well, you can only do a third of the units, because the rest of the folks haven't paid for it yet." And that's a huge no-no. The cost is to the landlord. They can't say, "Well, I sent my tenant an invoice, they didn't pay it, so you can't inspect it." It doesn't work that way. Possible resistance from landlords is, you can expect that at some level. And through education, you try to bend over backwards to make it right. This is a brief description of the startup process that we endorse. We come in and identify all the rental dwelling units, we create a mailing list, help the city draft and adopt the certification ordinance, and either update or adopt a property maintenance code, depending on your situation, and the fee schedule, and then schedule and conduct the town hall meetings and move forward from there. Phase two is program implementation, where we go on a campaign to get every registered or every rental property registered, get them scheduled, and then perform that first cycle of inspections, certify all the known rental dwellings, and then whether it's two, three, or four years later, we repeat that process on an ongoing basis. State housing law says, if you do this, you must do it at least once every four years. Can't do it any more than that. Meaning, you can't do it once every five or six, has to be at least every four. Most communities do two, some do three, a few do four, depending on their unique circumstances and whatever they felt was right for their community. And that's your policy decision as a legislative body. So that's the rental inspection program in a nutshell. There are two companion types of programs, because you will hear criticism probably of, you know, "Why are you picking on the rented homes? What about the owner-occupied or the vacant buildings?" I don't know if you have these yet or not, but many communities do a companion point-of-sale for both residential and commercial. Meaning, when it's up for sale, the seller, owner, has to come to the city, request and receive the same property maintenance inspection as a rental property under the same code. And then either fix the code violations prior to closing, or the buyer can post a reasonably small escrow with the city and accept responsibility to make all those repairs over an agreed-upon timeline, at which point they get their escrow back. But the reality is, the owner-occupied home is going to get certified as code compliant one way or another through that sale. And then for vacant buildings, it's the same thing. We deal with the owners to bring vacant buildings into compliance. It's a little bit different there, because we stress the outside appearance first, take care of anything on the outside so that people don't have to look at it. And then on the inside, depending on the timeline for reuse or reoccupancy, we work with them on that. So that, in a nutshell, is how rental housing certification works. And our company is available to help you if you choose to use us. We've written many of these ordinances, they've been vetted by numerous city attorneys and others. And we would be happy to help, you know, develop an ordinance for the city if you choose to go down that road.
Thank you, Michael, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Council members, raise your hands and I'll call on you. Scott.
Yeah, so if you have a bad landlord situation, and they just decide to blow it off, whoever walks in times to the council, does the city, do cities try to do something to get him going, you know?
Absolutely, we do. Most of the time, one-on-one, face-to-face conversations work pretty well. We explain to them the consequences, the benefits to them, as well as the community and their neighbors. And sometimes you've got to drag 'em kicking and screaming, but once they're in the program and they see how reasonable the inspections are and how the city's not trying to shut them down or displace a tenant, the city's simply trying to have them meet the minimum safety standards. We're not asking them to improve it to be the Taj Mahal, just meet the minimum safety building code standards. That's it. Now, the hard case, when they absolutely refuse, we typically will cite them, write a citation under your ordinance, which is a civil infraction, so it's not criminal. When we turn it into the district court, we ask for a formal hearing with the judge. We bypass the magistrate, go right to the judge. The city attorney is there with the inspection ordinance officer, presents the case, and all we're asking the court to do is order the landlord to comply with the terms of the ordinance. Register, open it up for inspection, make the repairs get certified. It's as simple as that. We have, I can tell you, in a couple of other communities within the past year, we've gone to district court twice, I think, on tough cases, when they just wouldn't even register, and once they registered, they were in it. And there was, we did run across one bad actor who owned, he owns an apartment complex in the city of Mylon with about 170 units, and another one in the city of Celine with about 290 units. And he absolutely refused to comply, so after going through the district court route and everything else, it became obvious, we had to go to circuit court. So the city's approved, and they did file a complaint in Washington County Circuit Court, the 22nd Circuit, and we've already had a hearing. And I'm happy to report that we're ready to sign consent agreements with a reasonable timeline for the repairs to be made. It helps that the cities also sue the lender, because the lender who holds the mortgage has all kinds of interests in that property. And I can tell you, Fannie Mae does not fool around. You fix it, or we foreclose. That's their position, it's as easy as that. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, Terry. Go ahead.
On this process right here?
Yes.
I understand the thing about how, once it's all set up, then fees collected from the landlords pay for the process.
Correct.
So there's no impact on city. But this is an extensive process right here. Who pays for all this?
Well, you're talking about the research, the registration, the ordinance adoption.
Registration, the ordinance.
Phase one.
Update.
So the ordinance adoption, if you contracted it out, like to a firm like ours or another firm that's capable of it, you would pay the firm to do the ordinance. And that's usually done on an hourly basis. It's, I can't give you a quote for an amount right now, but I can tell you, it's...
Now, my question is, who pays for it?
The city does.
And the city. So to say that there's no expense to the city, it's not quite true. Once it's set up, there's no expense.
Correct.
But to set it up, there's going to be some money.
Correct. Now, I will also say, when you set your fees, we encourage cities to cover all of their costs, not just the cost of inspections and all that, but cover your administrative time, your administrative costs, your overhead. It should all be built into those fees. Overhead meaning, if there's an office workstation, if there's computer software involved, you know, whatever it happens to be. So that the fees collected for the work that you turn around and pay, if it's a third-party vendor, you're going to realize, and it's not profit, but you're going to realize some surplus, that is designed to offset your overhead.
Yes.
So over time, you'll be able to recover that. And if at some point you determine that you're collecting too much, you simply lower your fees.
So you've done this a lot of times. I'm thinking that this is a town of 4,000 people, about 2,000 units. Are we in the middle or toward the end, whatever, of your range of people that you work with?
Size-wise?
Size-wise.
Smaller, towards the end, yeah, bottom.
So can you give us a plus or minus $20,000 number that's going to cover the cost of doing this? The city's going to have to pay for making this work, right? So is this $50,000 or $100,000?
To get the ordinance...
To do the whole thing.
To get the ordinance drafted and adopted and get to the start.
Identify the rented and contact...
Terry, I don't think we're at that point yet. No, I think this is just that introduction of, I think, I think we have to have further discussion to figure out if we wanted to move forward and ask for an official quote.
I don't want an official quote.
Right, right. I knew you wanted ballpark.
I can tell you, to get the ordinance drafted and get it through two readings of this council, you're probably looking at $5,000 or less.
Okay, so well under $50,000.
Well under.
He is our numbers guy, you have to understand. You were here to hear, you know, where towns pay.
I do get performance-based bonuses occasionally, but I'm not that guy, so...
Thanks for that, just to...
Just look for a big, big number.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's a question, anyone? Yes, Tim?
We have a big mobile home community on somewhere, so...
I love them.
How do you get, is there a certain way that, I mean, because obviously...
Yes. We've got a lot of experience with mobile home communities. As you're probably aware, manufactured mobile homes are licensed by the state. The state licenses the park itself, determines how many available spaces there are for homes, and the state determines what the park amenities. And they're supposed to do the code enforcement, make sure the streets don't have potholes and everything else. Doesn't always happen, I know. Matter of fact, the last we worked with the state, they were, I don't know, five, six years behind.
Wow.
They were actually asking owners to fix it and send me a letter letting me know, "You got it done," but never coming back to look. So unfortunately, a lot of it never gets done. We consider those to be single-family homes. We register them and we inspect them as though they were single-family homes, because they really, that's the closest category that they would fit into. And we're only inspecting the ones that are occupied by individuals that are renting the home itself. A lot of folks own their units, and they're paying rent on the space it sits on, and those are considered owner-occupied, we don't touch them. And the state Mobile Home Commission basically says, you can do rental housing inspections under a universal property maintenance code, as long as you also inspect every other type of rental housing. You can't pick on just mobile homes. Pretty simple.
I want to make a motion to allow Councilman Hanson to leave, so he can go pick up his wife at the hospital.
Yes, yes, please, thank you. Appreciate you being here. And keep your wife, our well-winded.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right, thank you, Terry. All right. Michael, I want to thank you so much. Did you have something else?
Well, he said, I read a look in here about separation walls and things of that nature. So when it comes to these older homes...
Yes.
Obviously, you're looking at old electrical, right, older plumbing.
Yes.
Is that going to be anything that you're going to mess with as far as that goes? Is there people, the box has to be updated, maybe, because obviously you can't wreck it, otherwise it'll fall.
Yes, I'm glad you asked, that's a common question from landlords. The property maintenance code does not require wholesale code updates to those infrastructure systems. The property maintenance code essentially says, whatever code, building code it was approved and constructed under, you have to maintain it in good working condition, period. So, an inspector is not going to come in, with a couple of minor exceptions, they're not going to come in and say, "Oh, gosh, this is 1940s electrical, you're going to have to update all the electrical in the house." No, we don't do that. But if something's malfunctioning and is not safe, we will make them repair it. The building code has triggers, though, so if a landlord decides they're going to do a serious, deep renovation on a portion of the home, the building official, wherever they, I think you pull permits from Livingston County Building Department, they're going to say, "This triggers upgrades of electrical, plumbing, and mechanical systems." But a housing, rental inspector, housing inspector will not trigger those things. Now, the exceptions would be things like GFCI receptacles in certain areas around water, like sinks and whatnot, and smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors, which I'm sure didn't exist back whenever, back in the day. But since 2018, the property maintenance code has required carbon monoxide detectors and smoke alarms long before that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. This is great food for thought, and this will definitely stay on our discussion items as we move forward to get this... John, thanks so much for having him come in.
Thank you.
And for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
All right. Next on our discussion items is our budget work session two for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. We do have a part of our packet. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hannigan.
Thank you. So we talked about general fund, major and local streets, and the equipment fund last time. We're talking about our component units, which is DDA, TIPA, Tax Increment Finance Authority, EDC tonight, as well as sewer and water. Just a couple of quick slides, I'm zooming on these. So this is very similar to what you saw last time, we just want to, I guess, focus on the right side. There's the impactful water projects, which would be the alley, which is the alley that runs behind Tavern 109, right to our west here, and then the Cedar Water Main Crossing, which is right down the end of Red Cedar. So those will be our water projects for the coming year. TIPA, talking about the Red Barn, demoing that, adding a new cold storage garage, which is exactly how it sounds, it's just a garage, working on the community service building, put some money into that to preserve it, still in reasonably good shape. And then the Ice House, which is not necessarily a TIPA-funded project, but it is a pretty significant project for the coming year. And then over there to the bottom left is DDA. We have got a couple of parking lots that we're going to be looking at doing, and then continuing our marketing efforts. So again, just to kind of double down on the construction projects, the ones in blue are water-funded projects, the Cedar Street Water Main, River Crossing, and then the Downtown Alley, and then there's the TIPA projects again. So with the DDA, we'll be looking at doing the Police City Lot, which is this parking lot right out here behind me, and then also the parking lot for the Depot. Those are in the DDA, DDA is discussed at. Had a good discussion about that at our budget work session for DDA. And then the City Hall West Drive, which is the driveway that's just to the west of our building here. It's not replacing the whole parking lot, but there's some areas that need to have some work done, particularly around the sidewalk. And then we're going to continue our funding of marketing and maintenance, which is things like the benches, streetscape elements, flowers, things like that. Any questions on DDA?
The lining of the parking spots on the river's streets, is that in this process or where are we at with the...
Yeah, so we did purchase our own line striper. It's actually, we purchased it in the current budget year that we're in, and that's an activity that we'll be doing moving forward. Historically, and that, to me, only go back three and a half years, the city...
Contracted it.
Contracted that out, and the cost of contracting is worth, costs more than the actual paint sprayer, so we'll be doing that moving forward. So we'll be, over time, we'll be making our way through town every season to paint all of our various parking lots and crosswalks. The one exception being, we won't do the striping on Grand River itself, because the MDOT will do that, but we will do the parking spots. And then on North Potnum, South Potnum, and then Lind Road, we have a small agreement with the county, and it costs us about $2,600, because we get their unit price, because they, you know, they stripe lines by the 100 miles.
Do we have to put in a request to MDOT and have Grand River re-stripe for parking, because it's pretty non-consistent?
We have to, we'll have to stripe it ourselves, the parking, they just do the centralized.
Oh, okay, all right, so we can...
We'll need a permit to operate, but that's a relative thing.
All right.
Good question. So jumping into sewer fund, there's no rate increase proposed this year, as I mentioned a couple of times, with some of our staffing reallocations. We've reduced our personnel costs a bit. We do have pretty significant plan improvements that will be necessary in the immediate future, and that's in the next one to three years. Really, it's the replacement of the UV bank, the ultraviolet bank, which is, that's not going to be cheap, that's going to be around a million-dollar project. Couple of different ways that we can pay for that. Still looking at getting a congressional earmark for that, the government's still doing that, so we're pursuing that pretty diligently. This is the old rate study, you know, I got those circled, and it's kind of got the, you know, red no-go acts. When we had a rate study done a couple of years ago, you know, they suggested that we raise sewer rates by about 15%, and we've talked about that at length, and we're trying to avoid that as much as we can, and we're going to be able to avoid any rate increase in the next year, and certainly aren't contemplating anything near a 15% increase. That's pretty significant rate shock. If you follow... If you follow, you know, some of the headlines, I don't know if, hopefully you're familiar with the city of La Soto. They're looking at a hundred and twenty-two percent rate increase, a hundred and twenty-two percent rate increase. That's a lot, and obviously, pretty significant impact to their residents and businesses. So, we do need to get back on a rate track of small increases, but as I said, with some of the staffing allocations, we're able to forego that this year. Water and sewer are both about a million dollars, so, you know, if we can save, if we enhance our revenue by forty or fifty grand, or save costs by forty or fifty a grand, that's a four or five percent swing in those funds. So, that's what we've been able to do. And just highlight some of the, the expenditures, list stations, we always have minor repairs to do. There's the UV project we talked about. You know, we do sludge hauling. Chemical costs are up a little bit. There's a couple of things that are coming, like the aeration tank cleaning, which just sounds really exciting, but it's really not. And then SCADA is our remote system that provides warnings to our operators if there's an issue with a list station or at the plant. So, the other thing, the fund analysis, we, we are required to generate a surplus of about eighty thousand dollars annually to meet our repair, replacement, and infrastructure obligations, or we designate a part of our expenses to come from that cash balance, and we, we've done that. The boiler replacement would be an example of that. So, we continue, that's part of the, the annual budget for now. Any questions about sewer?
Yeah, my question is that if the rate increase comes through, it's pretty substantial, and we decide not to do it, we have alternative information that allows us to say, we're not going to do this. Because I know that these people that are doing the study know what they're talking about. There's no question about that. So, my question to you is, if you know a series of stuff that allows us not to have to raise rates like they say, why not just have a rate, not have any rate study at all?
So, when I started here in twenty twenty-two, I walked through the door, and I was handed a sewer study that we have to do a twenty-five million dollar plant expansion, or basically, we're all going to float away in the river. And that rate track was somewhat based on that schedule of getting us to the point of paying for the debt service for a twenty million dollar plan. And I reject those findings, because we don't need to do that, so.
Did you read, so, what I said earlier, that they know what they're talking about, you're saying we don't?
Well, they know what they, they're talking about in the sense that there are financial analysts that independently review these things, not considering the potential impact to the community. They just have a spreadsheet, and they make the numbers dance. And so, there's, the other thing with that rate track, there was a couple of different models that were presented. One was a twenty million dollar plant expansion. The other one was getting to, basically, an overage of two hundred thousand dollars in surplus. That's, that's twenty percent of our fund. That's, that's, that's not necessary, because we're already, we're already, we already had the RRI provision in the bond covenants. So, you know, my analysis is the one who ultimately, you know, has to present rates to you and get into a budget adopted, and then operate all the funds. I, I, their, their numbers, their analysis worked for the set of assumptions they were using.
Correct.
But.
That's a key point to point out. When they were given the scenario of, we need to replace the wastewater treatment plant, they based that table on, how are you going to fund twenty-five million dollars? So, if we were to have another rate study done, and John were to give them what our current scenario is based off of these PowerPoints, you'd see very, very incremental, if any, rate increases. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's true, and, and I don't mean to take, you know, food off the table of people who provide rate studies. But once you get the master spreadsheet, it's just changing the numbers.
Right.
And we have the master spreadsheet.
You're just changing those percentages per year of, Al Dahlia, two, two managers ago, he did a very extensive spreadsheet of what it looked like, three percent every year for water, for sewer, six percent. So he was doing studies internally, you know.
Well, I come from a time one day, Andrew Stone, in the seventies, and we inherited the problem.
Yes, we did.
Tracy Ag came and said, this is what you need to do, and we said, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And we raised rates seven percent for years in a row.
And we're to a point now where we're very comfortable, and we're able to not have to do that. But thank you for pointing that out, and I love your historical knowledge from past councils, I really do. Because it shows, it shows how different we've become and, and able to operate for the better of the community. So I, I appreciate your, your, your input on that.
Just got a comment. Our city sewer and water rates are quite high, and I appreciate what John has done over the last couple of years, and looking at ways to minimize the expense in those areas, so that we don't have to burden the citizens with another increase in water and sewer. And if you, you ask, if you ask most of the citizens, say, what the number one concern, other than taxes in Williamson, they'll say the rate of city and sewer. So I appreciate us being able to hold the line on that, based on the way John has made other ways to reduce those expenses.
Absolutely. Thank you, John.
Sure. So water, very similar scenario, you know, small degrees of personnel costs. Water's in a better financial shape than the sewer is, primarily, the water plant is newer. And so, things do break from time to time, and it's, it's a, you know, fifteen-year-old plant. Not, there's not elements in there that are sixty-seven years old. So here's the rate model. Again, the proposal was approximately eight percent in one year, and then, you know, a couple of percent after that, so we've been able to forego that. This is a pretty standard slide. We don't expect any major issues in the plan itself. You know, we continue to do water main projects. We'll talk about that in the next slide. That's the RRI. You can see, we don't have nearly as, we don't nearly have as much debt in the water system, so we have to have about fifty thousand dollars annually in RRI. We did receive that federal community project funding. Still have not received our first draw yet. That's about a one-point-five million. That's for Williams and Lloyd. Once we have that, we'll be able to start planning Cedar Street. We're actually planning that and submitting permits, because permits for water mains can take some time. We do, we do expect to get the money sometime in the next, you know, thirty to sixty days. Had a discussion with the grant folks about a week or so ago, so that's looking positive. So, as I said, we'll be looking at doing the Cedar Street Water Main and Downtown Alley. So that is a quick march through water, sewer, and our component units. As you know, if you have any questions, please do review, and that's for the public as well. Our public hearings for rates and budgets and millage will be on the twenty-seventh, and then we would adopt the budget at the June meeting. Just want to point out that public hearing is Tuesday, it's the day after Memorial Day.
Is that here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's here, yeah.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. Good questions during that presentation. All right, next on our discussion items is our ordinance discussion. This is a continuing discussion. We did have some pretty in-depth discussion last time. I brought my ordinance book and handed it off to the next council member. Steve Jenkins was the wonderful recipient of that, so happy reading. John, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, to see if there's anything you want to add for our ordinance discussion.
No, I just, we, we had talked about sharing this list of, the, this is just basically from the last year or so on, you know, multitude of different kinds of code violations, and then things that have been resolved. And then there are a couple handful of those in red. Actually, there's three different ones, ones that repeat, that are ongoing, and I'm not really going to talk about those too much, because they are ongoing.
Sure.
And ultimately, the penalties for those with noncompliance would be a civil infraction. So, just gives you an idea, you know, as we talked about. And we get more complaints for, for tall grass than, than listed there. These are just the ones that we've had to send a, a communication letter to. Again, our goal is of trying to bring folks into compliance when we can. This by no means is the, you know, the only, this isn't the unique list, I guess you'd say of, there, there are certainly probably other code violations out there, but these are ones that we've been working on.
Okay. And just to clarify for our members here, our viewing audience, our council, these were all complaint-based driven. Nobody drove around, nobody's looked for these problems directly. This was complaint-based from the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, basically, July one to June thirty. There's what, twenty?
I think there's twenty, because that's the number.
Okay. So we don't see a, a lot of complaint-based.
Yeah, I mean, typically, they, you know, in the spring and summer, obviously, the tall grass complaints go, go up a bit. But, and, and, again, not all folks, not all complaints that we get, not everybody gets a letter.
Sure.
Folks come into compliance on their own. Sometimes it's a phone call. Sometimes if you see somebody out there, you can say, you need to cut your grass, and they're, they're compliant with that.
Okay, all right. Questions regarding the list, any other discussion? Or we'll just keep this as a ongoing discussion item? But I appreciate this data. This is exactly what, you know, we asked for, and it's nice for us to be able to see what happens in a, in a, in a year's cycle.
Can you view where we're at in terms of, like, we're going to all read the book.
Sure, you want it next? You don't have your over?
You don't want, I don't know what to do.
All right, Steve's done. I don't mind passing mine around, really.
Anyway, we're going to all read the book, and then we're going to, like, think about whether we want to make a.
Yeah, yeah. I would say that we'd want to have just a separate work session on this, and really do some, be very thoughtful about it, how we approach it. What are we really looking to resolve? Do we need to resolve anything? Is our book okay? Do we need to radically change it? How does that look? Do we get it, do we do it internally? Do we invoke McKenna to work on it again, like they were supposed to historically about seven years ago? So, there's a lot of different paths we can take with this, but I think this is something that's going to evolve over time.
See, what I like is this, okay? I like the idea that we do this, and then we're like the city that someone says, well, you know, Williamson's really got their act, they went through the whole thing, and they like, they figured out, like, what you don't have to do, what you do have to do, that kind of stuff.
Right, yeah.
I like that idea, that city, the people come.
Yep, I think that's our goal. I think if we all have awareness of what's in that book, then we, we, I think that's a good goal to have, Scott. So, thank you. All right. Moving on, our next item in discussion is the construction project updates. Again, John, you get to do a lot of talking tonight, so back to you.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, other than with approval tonight, that, that we'll start here hopefully as soon as possible with the, the patching on the, in the various locations. Again, our, our goal is always to try and minimize the, the impact, particularly during school traffic. So, South Putnam may have to wait a little bit till school's out, but that's, you know, a matter of weeks now, with school being out earlier. So I don't have anything beyond that.
Master plan?
Yeah, we had a really, really good meeting last time. There were no site plans, so we really got a chance to really get, cover a lot of ground. We got through, I think it was a couple chapters that are mostly final. Basically, all the demographic things and charts and whatnot are done. And then we did focus on, we had a side discussion, it's been a, a running theme about landscape standards and setbacks and things like that. We came to some consensus on what those would look like, and so I've been tasked with putting together that, the language for actual text amendments for the next planning commission. And we're going to start on those now. We're not going to wait for the master plan to be finished. Because we don't expect substantial text amendments to the zoning ordinance based on the master plan that we have in progress, but the, the key issues like the, and it's really a one that Williamson wrote overlay in that district, changing some of the language there, modifying some of the, you know, where drive-throughs are allowed or they aren't. And so those text amendments ultimately will, will come to city council, and that will be, you know, sort of in parallel with the, the master plan. So, yeah, it was a good meeting.
All right. Then, I don't see Phil here from Spicer, but do you have any main core of safety?
Nope, they've, they've submitted to MDOT for, for the permitting for the crosswalks, and we're keeping our fingers clean.
All right. Moving down our agenda, correspondence received, information only. We do not have anything, so I'm going to jump right to department head reports. Back to our city manager, John here. Venturer, city manager.
I think everybody's tired of me droning on, so I'm going to be very brief. Yesterday was just such an awesome day in town. I was here with my family for Mother's Day, and the folks were everywhere. Market had a great opening day. It was really, really awesome to see so many folks out and about. I know Mr. Jenkins is probably happy to report. They ran out of ice cream, but quickly got restocked. So, we, we made a stop in there as well yesterday. So it was just a beautiful day. It was a great day to be in Williamson.
Great, thank you. Chief, how are you? I see you've got somebody here with you.
I do. After, you've heard about him doing so well in the police academy in these last few months.
Officer Madrono, welcome.
Marcus Madrono started today, this morning, at eight thirty this morning. And he goes, the night shift starts tomorrow night, so, welcome.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. We've heard a lot about your, your academy experience, but say a couple words, you're part of the academy and being a part of the department.
I'm Marcus Madrono. I think I've met some of you guys, but you guys that don't know me. I was a reserve here for about a year and a half, and then she offered me the full-time spot, and I couldn't be happier to say yes. I love the department, great department. We got a good family over there, and I like working in the city. Most are police-friendly, so it's a good place to be. And I'm a, I'm super excited to be here, so thank you, guys.
All right, well, welcome. Thank you. We'll watch for you out there, and thank you for what you're going to do for this community. Definitely appreciate it. And thank you, chief, for supporting Madrono through the academy.
Most welcome.
We got your report here.
Yeah, the rest of the police report is there. We began planning for National Out of Twenty Twenty-Five, the first Tuesday of August. That's, we've already got quite a few things booked for that, so we'll be reaching out to some more places in the city and to make that even bigger and better.
All right, excellent. So, school year's winding down. Do you know exactly how many more days you got to be on crosswalk patrol?
I, I don't know the days, but it's, it's soon.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Well, thank you so much for everything you've done throughout the school year, for the students, and for the traffic control. Like I said, I, I've heard nothing all year long. That's amazing. I don't think that's happened in my almost entire city, here, so I appreciate that.
No crosswalk issues, and we're full staff, so.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. We do have our reporter here from Livingston County, who serves as our building and safety engineer for our permits, for new permits, for new builds, renovations, residential, commercial. If you do have any questions, something that you see on here, please reach out to our city manager, John Hanifin, and he will be able to get those questions answered for you. We do have our treasurer's report here. Tom, would you like to share anything while we're sitting here?
I, as always, I guess if anyone ever has questions on any of this, my door's always open. I don't know if we have a door, but, you know, my office is always open.
We know where you are.
Yes, that's exactly.
All right, thank you.
You know, we said everything. We just, this is just everything to try to provide once a month for you guys.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much. And again, if you see something on these reports that you have questions about, don't hesitate to reach out to Tom or to John. Committee, subcommittee reports. We're at the beginning of the month. Does anybody have anything that they need to share from any of their meetings recently? No? Yes? No?
On top of the planning.
Planning? All right, excellent, thank you. Audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone out there that would like to come forward at this time? All right, moving along, council member comments. I'll start with John down here at the end.
Okay.
All right, Steve. All right, Scott.
I have one thing. Rick Proust, or Proust's Patch is at the market. And I remember that when he started his business there, he had a tax thing going on. And he, Wanda makes this comparison because of what we're, so what happened with him was, he got twelve years tax where it stayed what it was initially with the property without his new stuff. And after twelve years, it went way high because of his, so, so twelve years. So that's what happened then.
All right, excellent. All right, Tim.
Oh, yeah, the gentleman here that gave that presentation was very, very thorough. He was very nice, and talking with some of the people, having some work done. We do have a problem with Livingston County as far as their inspectors coming, and then one inspector comes and says one thing, and this other inspector comes and he adds on and stuff like that. So, I don't know if, you know, if we decide not to go with that group, probably, if there's anyone to fix that.
Yeah, I would say, let's have a, have a side conversation with John, because he's going to be our contact back to Livingston County, and if we have inconsistency with the inspectors, that's their internal problem that we need to help them solve for our businesses here. So I would say connect with John, and if those businesses that are having issues need to have a meeting with you, or you can be their conduit to John, let's, let's work on that, because we don't want anybody having. because we don't want anybody to have any difficulties, you know, going through a process, for sure. So, that's what I'm saying.
I don't want to filibuster this topic, but I'd be happy to be with anybody who, who has pulled a permit. And, you know, they, they, we've had some folks who've had issues with the building and department because they haven't pulled permits or they haven't received a zoning permit. My suspicion is those are the folks that are complaining. Doesn't mean that there aren't other complaints out there.
Yeah. But yeah, let's, let's get them directed and help facilitate that if, since you've had a conversation with them.
At least, at least once a year, I, I talk to the building official, the deputy, and then the major plan reviewer in that department for Livingston County, at least once a year. And then, you know, not daily, but probably weekly, I have discussions with them as well.
All right, cool. You guys connect. All right, excellent. Well, it was an absolutely beautiful weekend. We're really starting to get to the swing of things. Farmer's Market kicked off yesterday. I couldn't be more proud of where they have come from a little under 10 years ago when the city decided that the market needed to spin off into their own entity. And to see the number of people that came out on Mother's Day, on Mother's Day to Williamson, to walk through our city market, to walk through our city, to experience it was just amazing. Lots of great vendors there. The new city market, or the new farmer's market manager seems very excited about this season. He has some great ideas. So that was really nice. It was a beautiful weekend all around. And so I, let's get out of here and enjoy some of this evening before the rain comes, maybe? You know, but everything's looking great in the city.